Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
Yes.
Mr. Lysak? Yes.
Would you all please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
(inaudible)
Two of the minutes for the March 3rd, 12th, 17th, and 24th. We will not do the April meetings as we will have those in our May board back in. Are there any questions, additions, or corrections to any of those minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve, please.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Lysak?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Communications?
We have a letter tonight from Ms. Bowman, a board member for tonight's attendance night, to the Woodmore community members. I thought it was important to inform you that I am not at tonight's board meeting, Board of Education meeting, due to a previous commitment with my job. It is very important to me to support the youth in our community, as well as the youth I work with. If anyone would like to talk with me, please send a message to my school email address, JulieBowman@WoodmoreSchools.com. Thank you, Julie Bowman. We also have a thank you card from Mr. Cummings for the gift that was sent in regards to
Adjustments to the season's meeting. Do you have that number? What changes happen? Any questions? Members of the Board of Education, this time I would like a three-day statement. Let me address some questions that have arisen last week regarding the legendary discrepancy in the district's cash statement, as an initial matter of this issue has been since last July, and has been working hard to reconcile the matter. To give you some background, the district's former treasurer, Kim Slade, left last July as a district in the process of closing his fiscal vote for year 2014. The job fell upon the treasurer's staff by allowing the traders to leave the books and records in working order. But the staff couldn't reconcile down in the last page, the numbers had been left. In order to close fiscal 2014, the closing statement including fiscal 14, a reconciled adjustment of $77,033, which amounts to 610% of total budget. The district closes books to be able to pay bills and keep the building project going, among other things. The district has hired an interim treasurer, who became aware of discrepancy, but she did not immediately store her predecessor's numbers. Our staff was concerned about not completely balancing the funds. I asked president of the board, signed a statement acknowledging that if we used that number, that had been left, the new board would have fixed the problem. Concerned about the issue, the board will find plenty of resources to reconcile the discrepancy. We were fortunate to have helped from some other treasurer and neighboring districts that pointed out that identification of the source of discrepancies was the key, and the adjusting of the issue from there forward was quite manageable. The interim treasurer had been hired to replace the slate under the job overseeing the treasurer's staff to get anything to order, and she also continued to try to reconcile the cash balance issue. Couple months later, the district hired current treasurer, Jamie Pearson, who also set about looking the root of the balancing issue. Despite her best efforts, like several people who looked at the issue before, she did not isolate the source issue, and she gave the board a request approval firing an outside accounting firm that had the time and resources to sit down and begin the board review. The board approved doing this. Since the problem was reconciled, the cash balance became normal on the nurse's slate's departure. The district has worked diligently to get to the root of the cause and then apply a complete fix to the balance to perfect sealer. This issue has been discussed openly, although perhaps some of the public had not heard about it. More importantly, the board staff have made great efforts to pursue the matter, and then turned to an independent firm a few months ago to help bring that matter to a close. With this additional assistance, we expect this matter to be corrected in the near future. Thank you. Other members of the board, treasurers, or report for finding this meeting?
Most of that will be done during the treasurer's report.
One thing under board discussion, board members of Mrs. Pearson just ran it off for us, and I have it here somewhere, I think. Email that she received from the state on the kindergarten issue. I don't know if you have enough time to read it. I've read it several times, had some other people look at it, and where do we go over here with the kindergarten issue that had come through the state? Does anybody have any questions? When I read this, to me it looks like we are going to have to refund what we charged the parents last year to the state. Does anybody else have a different opinion other than that?
To the state or to the parents?
Mr. Huss, can you tell me where you're in that?
It doesn't really come out and say that. I'm just trying to, that's what it sounds like to me as you read it over. I mean, I mean, like the next step, I would like to ask someone down there if you could, if that is what we're supposed to do.
I can do that. I can send another email to Mr. Naris.
If you can find that out, so we can move forward with this issue.
Hey Steve, so I think there may be a perception in the public that was, because I don't think this was resolved, that we didn't know, so there may be some people out there that think we have to pay the parents back. And so what we're saying is that we're not sure, and we're looking into that.
No, we still don't have a definitive answer.
So that was a rumor, or that was unknown information that was given out? Okay, thank you.
We're still working on it. Getting hard facts and writing it right in from Columbus is very difficult.
I'm a parent of a kindergartner, so I'd like to know some.
Recognition of staff, is there any staff members who should speak? Recognition of students, is Lily Strong, you're the first one on the list, where are you? Step right up to the microphone. You can put whatever you want to do.
Dear Board of Education, first of all, I would like to thank you for letting my friends and I speak out on behalf of the Gay Club. Due to the days, some of our classmates couldn't attend the meeting, but helps write and support our message. My name is Lily Strong, and these are my friends, Sophia, Biddle, and Emma. Gay students are gifted and talented education. It is a great place to be in your life, even in it. Gay is different from our other classes because it has the goal of building and class before a high count, highly countless, oh my gosh, complex thinking and interacting actively. It also meets the unique needs of not one, but all the students in the program. Now, your problems were bringing home to students from the special program. We can answer that. Recent studies show that if a child is born with, here she may need a little bit of gay that is responsive to their learning and behavior. Gay gives students a chance to learn English. Brings resources to help them to test back spot on. A braver teacher raises a question that childless students are questioning their, questioning their knowledge of the world, and it's the history, history alone. The gay teacher also expects us to keep the day going. During the tree street, us writing skills and challenges us to think about the topic of the day. We also learn different ways to solve problematic problems. Gay gives students a chance to go above and beyond. It helps kids learn critical thinking. A gay teacher receives a special training that she must have in order to teach. She has got this, I verify this with Mrs. McElhamsky, the current gay teacher. I hope you will think about all of the reasons we value the gift of the talented educational program. Please do not take it away. We would like to close with a profile of a good book of all. I really do like gay, you can understand it. There's lots of fun to listen to, we like reading books all the day. We look forward to it every day, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Ms. Emily Barringer?
Many people saying that we just walk into choir and sing, but there's a lot of fun that goes into that. In class, Mrs. Nitz teaches us how to find our voices and grow as singers. We learn how to breathe properly, blend our sound, use our diagram, and create music. But most of all, she teaches us how to sing, because nobody just walks into her class as a singer. We have to use the skills that she teaches us every day. She also teaches us how to perform. She teaches us how to stand in front of people and sing confidently. And because so many of us have gained our confidence from her class, we are introduced to new opportunities such as solo and ensemble, or singing at, singing at church. Yes, I understand that choir will be offered next year. However, to create a successful music program, you need a highly qualified person. Mrs. Nitz is the face of this program, and without her, the success will not continue. When Mrs. Nitz started teaching at Woodmore, she saw 75 kids a day, and today she sees about 280. This number grew so much because of the success. Kids want to be on the winning team. We want something that we can be proud of, and we are. We are proud of the reputation that we have created. Taking a successful music program away is also taking away career opportunities for students who are looking at music for a career. Not only has Mrs. Nitz been extremely successful, she also connects with her students. She is always the first person that we go to when we need anything. Students that feel like they don't belong anywhere belong here in our music program. Mrs. Nitz wants her students to be better not only in music, but in every aspect of their lives. She makes us work very hard and shows us that we can do anything we never thought we, we can do something we never thought we could. Mrs. Nitz has a quote in her classroom, and it says, "To teach is to touch lives forever." And she has. We will be able to use our skills that she's taught us for the rest of our lives. This class has given us the gift of music. We don't just look at her as a teacher, but more as a role model. She has taught us that our talents are worth being used, and our voices are worth being heard, and we have developed a huge appreciation for her and everything that she does for us. We couldn't be any more grateful for her teaching us teamwork, responsibility, self-discipline, and with that hard work and dedication, you can succeed in anything. Our choir changes lives by bringing students out of their shells and introducing them to music. While writing this speech, I asked a few students to describe Mrs. Nitz using one word, and some of their answers were inspiring, happy, caring, passionate, dedicated, encouraging, tough, motivating, and unforgettable. The lyrics to a song Sinfonica is currently singing says, "You have taught me how to love, you have taught me how to live, a life that's filled with music, a passion yet to give. When I hear laughter, when I hear singing, when I hear music, I think of you." And these lyrics express our feelings for Mrs. Nitz and what she has given us in her class. We love her very much, and we are so thankful for the lessons and the memories that we have made in her class. She is irreplaceable, and we hope that she is able to continue making our programs successful.
Hannah Gardner?
Hello, my name is Hannah Gardner. I am a senior in high school, and this is my first year participating in Drama Club. To start off, I'm willing to, and I'm going to, tell you a bit about my past, something that I don't really talk about much. When I was 12 years old, I had four dear family members die in my family one year. I do not want your sympathy for this, but I do want you to listen and focus for just a few minutes. At the age of 12, I developed a bad depression, but I believed that, but I believed that if I talked about it, everybody would leave. At one point, goodbye, at this point, the goodbye was permanent. So I shut down completely, and I never told a soul about the state I was in. Finally, after about four years, I told. I never found my place, and I never got better. But then Drama Club came into my life. Do you know how it feels when you finally feel like you found your place? For once, even, for, for once, even if it was only for three hours, I had a place, I had a part, and I had a purpose. In life, I don't feel like that. Now it happens to some kids who are exactly like me, and they want to do Drama next year. Are they supposed to be overlooked? Or what about the kids who found their place this year, and now are they supposed to give that up? I get that the money is an issue, but can't you just listen? I changed for the better, and I have proved. I've had strangers come up to me and tell me that I've changed their life because of the speech I gave on senior night when they gave the gifts to the directors. Somehow I opened their eyes. I don't know. But why don't we give other students a chance to change lives? I think this is something that's worth fighting for, so fight with us. I also have a letter written to Marcia from the phone, somebody wants to, who wishes to stay anonymous. Dear Marcia, I wanted to send a personal note to tell you how very much I appreciated and enjoyed your musical, guys, and now, this year. As a, as a former participant in my own high school and college productions, I know that it takes, I know what it takes to pull off an event like that, of that magnitude, and I also know that the opportunity these moments create to develop confidence, friendships, and lifelong memories. I still remember my musical director and how she said, she sat me down, equipped me, and challenged me, and believed in me, and all my talents. Thank you for being this kind of influence on many students you lead for companion, for companion of the arts. As a gateway to developing students' identi, identity, and distinguishing our district one with excellence in the arts. You are a catalyst that is, that is life-changing, and to specific lives, forever, forever in ways that are one, perhaps more powerful than reading, writing, and remembering. And that is so, and that's no small thing. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Any other students? Will you move on then to any of the visitors here? Try and keep to three minutes if possible. Mrs. Wright, you're first on the list.
I'm speaking this evening because I'm deeply concerned and disappointed that the high school choir director position held by Mrs. Nitz is being considered as one of the cuts if the levy does not pass. From an educational point of view, it has been proven time and time again that students with music coursework or higher than academic subjects. We are living in an era where standardized testing is a reality and a very large part of a child's education. School systems are facing political pressure to raise scores on these tests. If we are preparing students to perform well on these tests, as well as preparing them for higher education, music should be the last subject cut. I would like to share some statistics and findings of students with music coursework and experience. I have a whole bunch on here, but I will share one because of the time. Students with coursework or experience in music performance scored 53 points higher on the verbal portion of the SAT, and 39 points higher on the math portion than students with no coursework or experience in the arts, for a combined total of 92 points higher. There's plenty of other examples on here, but I'll just let you read those later, and I have copies for anybody who would like a copy. Now I would like to express what I observe as a parent and a community member. I observe our music teachers being used to make the schools look good to the public. Our Woodmore music teachers are fully expected to have students performing at public functions of both the Elmore and Woodville communities, as well as outside of our community, at the request of school personnel, administration, or community groups. Our music teachers do this graciously without complaint because they want to give our students every opportunity to further their music education and performance skills. You will find our choir and band performing at Memorial Day parades, Labor Day parades, Christmas tree writings, senior citizen luncheons, nursing homes, retirement homes, malls, and K-H fundraising events. All of these aforementioned performances take place out of the, outside of the normal school day. Music students are also prepared to perform at every football and basketball game. You will hear our choir students singing the National Anthem regularly at sporting events. I haven't even begun to mention their regularly scheduled concerts, solo and ensemble contests, and large group contests. All of these activities make Woodmore schools look very good to the public. This weekend, both the choir and the band will be traveling to Finley and Bambino, Ohio to participate in a large group that's located in competition at the state level. They are eligible to be there because they earned a one or a superior rating at the district level. That does not happen without incredibly skilled music teachers who have students engaged and on task at all times. Again, this event will make Woodmore schools look very good. Unfortunately, after working so hard and allowing themselves to be used to make this school system look good, music teachers' jobs are the first to be considered for elimination. If Mrs. Nitz's job is eliminated, many of these activities and performance groups will also have to be eliminated because it is impossible for one high school music teacher, namely Mr. Emery, to do the job of two full-time music teachers. How will Mr. Emery have the time required to teach fifth and sixth grade beginning band students? Mrs. Nitz alone sees 200, and as their student said, 280 students per day. That's 50 to 60% of the student population in grades seven through 12. I wonder if the board is considering where all those students will go next year. Core classes usually cap at 25 students. It will take three teachers to accommodate the number of students Mrs. Nitz sees. How much will that cost? Not to mention the scheduling nightmare. Just so we're clear on the caliber of teacher, here we will be losing if it doesn't pass, let me remind you of a few of Mrs. Nitz's achievements. Mrs. Nitz was invited to have our Woodmore choir perform at the Ohio Music Educators State Conference last year. This is an honor every high school choir director in the state of Ohio dreams of. Only the best achieve this honor. At performance, but Woodmore, Woodmore schools on the map as far as excellence in music education is concerned. This past winter, Mrs. Nitz taught a clinic on voice-changing voices at the Music Educators Conference. I would like to quote Mr. Christopher Scholl, a voice professor from BGSU with lots of professional experience. Mrs. Nitz knows more about voice-changing voices than any other person I've heard speak on that subject. I learned so much from her, that from a college professor. All of these achievements stem from the simple fact that Mrs. Nitz cares deeply for her students and is willing to dedicate many hours of her time to ensure their success. Both Mr. Emery and Mrs. Nitz are completely dedicated to the students here at Woodmore Schools, which is why they are regularly picked by students as honored educators. After all the positive things Mrs. Nitz and Mr. Emery have done for this school system and for our students, Mrs. Nitz is being singled out and used as a pawn to pass a levy. I believe this is not only capital, but immoral. You are playing with a person's very likely, very likelihood. She stands to lose not only her job, but her home because of very poor planning and mismanagement of money from this Board of Education. Unfortunately, she is not the only staff member in this position. As citizens, we vote for board members in good faith, believing that they will represent our students and community by being knowledgeable about finances, educational laws, and rules dictated by the state. During a board meeting I attended several weeks ago, a community member suggested that a plan be implemented to ensure this community that this Board of Education will never make these mistakes again. I sincerely hope this administration and board took that suggestion to heart, and will follow through as a team. Decisions based on knowledge will allow us to keep our teachers employed, which will allow our students to get the very best education possible. Thank you.
Mrs. Busbeck?
Good evening. I have three things that I need to address tonight, and I notified all of you in email last week regarding the first two items after speaking with Mr. Huss at a town hall meeting eight days ago. If you've been in the auditorium in the past few weeks, you've noticed that the Drama Club has removed their items. There are a few items that were left behind because it would have been too difficult for us to remove them, but the back correctly, if you decide not to tear down this portion of the school. Those items are the spotlights that hang in the ceiling, as well as the mics that hang over the stage. I'm asking that you please not sell anything in the auditorium that would change it in any way, shape, or form. That's request number one. Request number two, I'm asking that you please not tag and sell anything that would change the functionality or the integrity of the auditorium, entire portion of that building that houses the auditorium. It is the Drama Club's hope that we're able to save this building and not have to replace anything because it was unnecessarily sold. And finally, I would like to know if there's been any kind of research done and answer to my question, would you consider selling the building? We have been approached by a nonprofit organization, this is very early in the game, that may be interested in purchasing the auditorium portion of the building for a dollar. Please note, if this building is sold to this organization, it's going to be off of your hands. The money you would have spent in demolition would go back into the debt of the new school. More importantly, it would secure a place for the school to host their annual musical, plus the life of the community with many opportunities. Thank you.
Mrs. Busco here. The board has discussed a lot of those things, and we have some figures and ideas that we've gathered from the construction company, and we've also talked to our legal people that did our build bonds, built the buildings and that. We have that stuff, and we need to sit down and go over that very quickly here for you. The board has made some decisions on how we proceed from here. All right?
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown?
Hi. Didn't hear anything today, but everybody else is holding something, so I'm going to do this as well. We're, we're all here tonight because we care about these kids, you know, and what's going to happen after May 5th, nobody knows. You guys have all made an apology to this community and promises that you're going to do better. I understand things change every week and new things come up. I mean, just looking at Jamie's sheet here, it's different than last week's sheet. So you guys promised to do better, so please, for all of us here and our kids, please do better from here forward. That's all I got. Thank you.
Mrs. Hansel?
I'm just getting ready, I have a question. Can you, what you read, we couldn't, here, we couldn't understand anything you said. Is there a way that you could put that on the website so that we could read that? The statement that you read right away in the meeting?
Are you asking for a copy of it?
Yeah, or you could just put it on the website, so I can read it.
Yeah, I'll put it on the website.
My name is Shirley Hansel.
My name is Shirley Hansel. I'm a retired employee of Woodmore Local Schools. I've always supported the schools, and it's very disconcerting that every time I come to a meeting, I hear something different, or I hear a rumor, or there's something in the papers, it's gone from bad to worse. I feel that neither voters, you are our employees, and the job that has been done has not been satisfactory. There's no accountability, therefore, there's no credibility, and our credibility is going downhill as we speak. So how can this change? Maybe we need better employment procedures. Are we following them when we hire people? I don't think so. We, as voters, can go in different board members, but as you've heard tonight, it's the students that are important. It's the students that we are supposed to all be working for. And so I'm thinking, what can we do to change this? My first thought was, could we remove the issues, the two that are on the voting ballot, remove them? I called the Board of Elections. They said, well, since we are two counties, that would be difficult. She's not an attorney, but it would have to go to the prosecuting attorney to ask that question. And since we're already involved in conversation with them, that might be something that you could ask, although the voting has already started as of April 7th. So my next thought was, how to, you're asking us to vote for these two issues. The one is renewed, we know that, that's needed, and hopefully that will pass, but I'm hearing more and more, I'm not voting for anything. How can we move forward, and you ask us to vote on these issues, when you do not even know where this school stands financially? Therefore, how do we know? I understand, Mr. Huss, that you're a farmer. If you were looking into purchasing a new farm, certainly you would look at your finances first. Can I afford this? How many acres is it? Is, what time I'm farming it, do I want to do on it, or does it flood every year? Is there leads on it? There's so many issues. How can we vote when we don't know what our finances are? So my next thought was, could we remove, I don't know, what is the wording on the ballots on these two issues? Do you break down and say what you're going to be cutting? If not, can we remove the second listing of cuts? With those that you are saying, if the income tax does not pass, these will go in place? Can we not hold off until we get the auditor's report back? Till we find out where the accountability and the balances from your records and the banks? Can we not remove that second listing of cuts until we know what we're dealing with? And hopefully that will be before November. I hope that you will consider this. Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, hi, Steve.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kevin Bubberger, and first I'd like to start off by asking the audience a question. By show of hands, how many of you know someone who has been involved in the Woodmore Drama Program or is currently involved in the Woodmore Drama Program at Woodmore? Fellas, how many of you, for the first time, would be completely crushed if Woodmore Drama Program had that? Before I got into theater by freshman year, I was an awkward freshman who had no friends, no chance for friendship, anything. And then I auditioned for Grease my freshman year and changed my life. While it may not have been Marsha in the Woodmore Drama Program, and I continued in community theater. Since Marsha has taken over the Drama Program, she's changed my life. I've met my best friend through theater. I've gotten huge amounts of confidence, as you can see, since I'm speaking with nothing even at the moment. I've learned to be able to talk in front of people. I've learned how to become a better person. Marsha and Sally, Mrs. Nitz, has changed my life, and for the auditorium to be destroyed would ruin the Drama Program. Yes, I know, we have a cafeteria or, you know, a civic theater, but that can hold maybe thirty people. And to say, you're not allowed to be in the musical because we don't have room, would be completely unfair to everyone who wants to be involved, because for that person, it could change their life like it changed mine. So I please just ask of you, don't let the Woodmore Drama Program die.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Teal. I live on Conner Road 62. To the Woodmore School Board, your failure to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted to you by the electorate of this school district has threatened a high quality of education that our students deserve. Now we want the voters to bail the district out of the financial mess that you've put it in by giving you more money. It's painfully obvious by recent, as well as past, board decisions that you still cannot be trusted to use the monies already available, let alone any new monies, to best benefit the education of our students. If the board truly cares about the educational welfare of our students, the following members will resign or cease to mediate. Steve Ross, President; Grant Cummings, Vice President; Karina Binge, Member; Julie Bowman, Member. The threat slash plea that services and educational options have to be reduced will fall on deaf ears of many voters. Your resignations, however, may just influence these people to take a chance on a new board by your voting in favor of the levies to give the district its financial ship.
Items for discussion, information.
First thing we're going to discuss is sale of the items of the current old elementary. We did read your email, Ms. Buschdecker. We will be having a sale that is scheduled for May 16th. I was waiting just to make sure that we had all of our information and where we would proceed from there. So we are going to sell the items. We are leaving the auditorium area at this time intact, but we will hold the sale. Ceremonial closings, I haven't done a lot with that. I will have to ask for some help with that. We had our ceremonial opening for our new building. We should have a proper ceremonial closing for our old building. We did plan a demolition date for after July 4th because in Woodville, a lot of the people come back for the Fourth of July, and they take pictures in front of the old building. With that at this time not set as far as the demolition, that still will occur. So we'll be looking at that. The Hadr Wing is still scheduled to be demolished at the scheduled time. So when the students move in June, there will be, the asbestos abatement will occur. We'll sell the items out of there, and it will be demolished in July. So we'll hold the same schedule for the Hadr Wing.
Elementary update, Mr. Wayne.
Okay, the first thing is, the second round of testing has begun. The part of the air, it took place on the OEA testing. So we started today with that, and the last for the next two weeks for periodic tests in the third grade, in our second grade. This is also a link that a third grade takes their second chance at the Ohio reading contest. If they do not pass that Ohio third grade guarantee, there's a chance they may not move on to fourth grade based on state legislation. That's not a good idea now, that's state legislation. Hopefully, I think we'll be okay. Second thing, we started kindergarten screenings last week. We're doing them three Fridays. Right now, we have forty-eight students that are screened. That number will also be added to the number. We'll do an unscreening in the summer. Typically, we have some move-ins, and we also have, parents who forget, you should never, first-time parents, get to know, we'll get them in in the summer, and we'll do the screening, and we'll have them to our kindergarten population. The end of April, beginning of May is also a busy time. We do bike safety. Farm Day, where local farmers bring in tractors and different equipment, animals. Our high school, I can tell you, is putting together. We also do a school-wide carnival in May. Grade levels, there are field trips in May, and then the teachers are starting to prepare lists for school supplies, CDs, and bicycles. And that's the elementary update.
First, I'd like to congratulate the girls, and Kevin, I came on to talk to you guys just for a jump. You'll see how nervous I'm talking right now, I'm the principal, so just a jump. I'd like to congratulate for the students of the month for seventh grade, Kirsten Flick and Tristan Tracy. For eighth grade, we had Maggie Gargat and Michael Lindhurst. As I shared last month, the only sports that we have going on, the junior high is track. We've had two meets so far. The boys and girls are doing a great job. For the Wildcats Invitational, our girls came in fourth place out of twelve teams, and our boys came in sixth place out of twelve teams. So I'd like to congratulate them. As Mr. Wayne said, park testing is still going on for him, but it is completed. The junior high, they are done. May 5th and 8th, we start the Ohio Air Testing. I'd like to, again, like I did last month, thank Mr. Keever for helping with the scheduling for the junior high testing. The junior high formal is Friday, May 8th. And Mrs. Cook and I met with Mrs. Brinkman yesterday to talk about sharing staff at the middle schools, since we're sharing some of the elementary staff members and the high school staff members, so she's going to share that with the board members.
Thank you. Mr. Keever.
Well, Kevin and Joe stole a little bit of my stuff, but we have two days of testing up at the high school. May 5th, a week of your last two days for this year. Things have gone pretty well. Students have adjusted and changed their schedule. High school students are great, they're flexible, they get along with just about anything with problem, and they've done a great job adjusting, and I appreciate them for that. Also, the staff, like frequently they're getting the schedule of changing, or how we're trying to move into changing, and they were great, so thank the staff and the students for their flexibility during this first year of testing. Prom's coming up, May 2nd. The prom grade will be at Chedele. There is another event booked at Chedele, so if anybody's planning on coming to the prom grade, you will be asked to park at the high school, and we'll be bussing people over to Chedele's as students and parents. There will be limited handicap parking at Chedele's, but they do have a paying event. They've already booked there, and they allow us to do this for free, so the parking will be at the high school and have to be shut over. Along with prom, I want to thank the parents that joined together to put together after prom for our students. That was in question for a little while, that was what happened. So I thank the parents and Ms. Brinkman for beating that up. It's great to know that our kids are safe that night after prom. The after prom will be at the high school again this year. On April 29th, the state high school head control will be coming in and talking to our students about safety on prom night and driving and being careful. Again, they'll be doing that at the end of the day on April 29th. We have a high school acting awards night coming up on March, I'm sorry, May 14th, at seven o'clock here in the elementary building. Last week, we had the great honor of the upcoming top ten. In case you're not familiar with that, they recognize our top ten students in the class, and each student brings along an honored educator. As was mentioned earlier tonight, it's great to see Mr. Emmerich, Mrs. Nitz, and Mr. Huss be nominated over and over by students on the positive impact they had in their career. It's just a great evening, so if you ever have an opportunity to attend that, it is one of the best award ceremonies you can go to. Just a quick senior update, the board, thanking Mr. Heminger for his dedication to all of our students, but particularly to these seniors. We already have thirty-three seniors committed to a college or university for next fall. Two of them have committed to the military. Eight have gone on to the skilled trades, and we have thirteen that are still deciding their exact plan for next year. Many of them going on to colleges, haven't picked which one. As far as extracurriculars, again, as mentioned earlier, the women's chorus, the fine crowd, and the band will be participating in the state competition this weekend. Two weekends ago, we had two DI teams, that's the Destination Imagination teams, compete at the state level, and one didn't qualify and won to the global contest. And we have all of our baseball, softball, and track teams in full swing, if they can ever get a game really with the weather. And then the binding graduation is June 7th, at two o'clock. And that's unlimited seating, so probably enjoy the ceremony.
Thank you. Mrs. Pearson.
If you look at my financial report for March, as I had said, we received most of our property tax payments.
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
You want to speak about the progress, please?
Well, I think we've already addressed the issue. Sorry.
Then you're going to your treasurer's report.
I am. I apologize. It looks, it looks as though we are doing okay. We received quite a bit of revenue in March. We also received a little bit more in April, so we will continue. But if I can skip down just for one second, if you look at the five-year forecast versus the actual numbers that is in the packet. When I originally did this, I did this with our budgeted balances instead of our actual expenditures, so I apologize for that, but this is the accurate document. What I did was I looked at what the state had forecasted for us, and then I looked at where we were spending-wise through March 31st. We should be about seventy-five percent spent, so we're doing okay in that sense. When I look at what is coming in, we have some foundation payments coming from the state. We have a little bit of real estate tax revenue coming, and that did come in April, as I just said. We have some tangible personal property phase-out, which will come in in May. And then if we look at some of my projected expenditures, payroll, we have seven pays left, April, May, and June. We have, I did an estimation of expenses based on our last three or four months of history. I'm projecting an ending balance in the positive, but not quite as healthy as we thought. So I'm going to continue to update this on a monthly basis. I have sent this to the Ohio Department of Education, just so that they can stay on top of it also, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of this. The one that I presented tonight is the accurate document. I received an email today, yesterday, about the budget from the state level. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that they're saying. One of the most major changes to the bill is a provision that would hold districts harmless for the tangible personal property and the public utility tangible personal property for fifteen and sixteen, I'm sorry, sixteen and seventeen, which means that the districts would not receive any less money than what was received this year, including their payouts. That's huge for us. That's a really good sign. Now, this is only at the House level, it still needs to go through the Senate and the, the Senator, uh, I'm sorry, the governor still needs to sign this, but we're moving in the right direction. What this House committee has done is added more than two-hundred million dollars for K-12 education to the governor's original, original proposal. Again, that is huge for school districts statewide. Um, in the second, in the next couple pages, I've kind of, I've given you some of the proposed updates for our K-12 education. I'm just gonna point out a couple. Um, one thing that really popped for me was it says it's gonna make ESCs, Educational Service Centers eligible to lead consortia applications for the Community Connectors Grant Program. I'm, I'm really curious what a Community Connectors Grant Program is and if it's something that Woodmore could be a part of, so I will be researching that. One hot topic is that it prohibits the general fund, the state's general fund, from being used to purchase, uh, park assessments. Uh, that was thirty-three million dollars, over thirty-three million dollars a year, so that's, that's really another huge thing for school districts. Um, it also supports educational service centers with additional funding in fiscal year seventeen, uh, if they can demonstrate that they have coordinated or consolidated services or purchases from member districts. That would not affect us immediately, but what I would hope then is if the ESCs are receiving more money, then maybe our costs would go down. So, maybe that's a little wishful thinking on my part, but, um, you have to hope. Mrs. Bench shared a, an interesting article about CAUV with me, and I thought I would share it with the board and the community. Uh, the bottom line is, we still don't know everything about CAUV, but I, I'm not gonna go into detail about it, but the article in here, I, I've included it for you to review. Talks about the, the formula and how they're coming up with the amounts to charge.
Jamie, when will we know with CAUV?
Uh, we will know about CAUV in June, is what I'm being told, late May or June.
Was there any discussion from Ohio State, someone had a bill in there that, that could only increase or decrease by a certain percentage? So, like, Wood County, the schools go there in the windfall this year, but there wasn't talk of them introducing a bill to limit the increase or decrease of that?
There is a talk about a cap, um, of the amount of increase that a CAUV person could see. I don't know what, where we're at with that, to be honest. I haven't, I didn't hear anything. I was in Columbus last week, um, at a treasurer's convention, and, and that's always really good and, and helps me to, to continue professionally, but we didn't talk about CAUV very much, so. And then the last thing is, with regards to the reconciliations, um, they are on the agenda tonight, and I just wanna read something. Um, I have heard that there are some concerns from the Board of Education regarding these reconciliations. I really wish that I would've caught this sooner, there's no doubt about that. However, I have dealt with several fires in the last six months I've served on the district. The first of which was the five-year forecast due only ten days into my tenure. I'm working as hard as I can to bring stability to the district's finances, and I really, I apologize if you feel that I didn't get to this fire, I'll call it fast enough, but I'm only one person, I'm doing the best I can. This issue stems long before I came to the district. Um, by recommending to hire a firm to reconcile the books, alerting the state auditor's office about the concerns I have, reaching out to the Ohio Department of Education, I believe it's hard to argue that I'm doing everything in my power to help this district. The, the first thing I was told when I took the job was that the district was not balanced and had not been balanced for quite some time. I knew shortly after that attempting to balance the books on my own, it was over my head. Since it was the board who told me that the district's, the district's books were not balanced, I argue that you probably knew this too. Therefore, I've concentrated my time on all the other fires of the district, of the district. Again, I apologize that I did not see this fire fast enough, um, and I encourage you that we have a, a candid conversation about that if there are any issues. Thank you. I'm gonna move on to my recommendations. Um, the, one other thing I wanna mention before we go into the vote, um, under my recommendations in the addenda is the retirement of Elaine Brinkman, who is the Assistant Treasurer. She runs payroll for our district, and I, I think it needs to be told that she has spent thirty-eight years in this district in one form or another. I mean, that is really, it's longer than I've been alive, so that's a really good thing, and, you know, we're gonna be really sorry to lose her, but she's doing personal things and we can't, we can't fault her for that, so, um, I just didn't want her to go unnoticed tonight. Mrs. She's not here. She's not here. I would maybe like to bring her to the May or June, so we could properly, um, thank her for her service. Some of the board members asked that I, we separate the treasurer's items A and D, so that is on the addendum for tonight. The first is to consider a resolution to approve the March fifteen financial reports, including cash reconciliation and monthly appropriations. The second is to consider a resolution to approve the revised cash reconciliation sheets for the following months, October, November, December, January, and February.
Is that it?
For this motion?
Someone speak up.
Can I make a comment, or do we have to move first?
We have to do that, move first. Is there a second? Mr. Cummings? Questions?
So, Jamie, I had asked you if you could write the word revised on these, um, new documents that were voting on the, the changes, just so that it would be clear if someone looked back that this was a second, a second version.
I, I apologize, I thought you meant on the, the motion itself.
Does this, does this show up in the actual, this goes into public record, right?
Yes, I, I can add.
A way that that can be?
Absolutely, yes.
Jamie, given our fiscal situation, I've been advised by legal counsel that why these should be separated is because we should not approve any financial statements until there is an external audit.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bench?
No.
Mr. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Lizaq?
No.
Mr. Huss? So, I'm gonna remove, I'm just gonna move forward. I'm going to remove A and D from the original agenda, because that's what we just voted Uh, B, consider resolution to approve a contract with Julian and Group to, to prepare GAAP statements on behalf of the district. This will be a three-year, um, commitment. Consider resolution to enter into contract with Shakeley Unit Service as the district's third-party administrator for workers' compensation at a rate of five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars for calendar year two thousand sixteen. Skip down to E. Consider resolution to accept the following donation, an AED, Automated External Diffusor from the Harris Elmore Fire Department. And then we move over to the addenda, and F, consider resolution to approve a contract for the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year with NWOET Northwest Ohio Educational something, technology, I think. Uh, there is no charge for the basic technology membership, which is what we've signed up for. And then finally, as I stated earlier, consider resolution to accept the following resignation for the purpose of retirement, Elaine Brinkman, Assistant Treasurer, effective July first, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Second.
Questions?
Jamie, I have an E, um, Julian Group, is this separate from our audit?
Yes, so what happens at the end of the fiscal year is we, we work on a cash basis of accounting. We needed to convert it to the GAAP basis, yes. And then those are the, the statements that are audited. Part, part of what's audited.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Lizaq?
Yes.
Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
Yes.
Along with Superintendent.
Thank you. Um, first, a couple of things that I'd like to review, as Mr. Ball had mentioned, I had met with the junior high principal and the counselor. One thing that we'll be looking at is approving a resolution sometime before June for career and tech readiness. That has to go into now and into the junior high all the way up to the high school, so I will give you information on that. I will scan and email that to you. Please review that, we'll continue to discuss it, and I'll ask for approval on a resolution. Like to thank all the individuals who have come. We have scheduled Jamie and our several meetings, uh, the past several weeks, we've had a lot of good, uh, discussions. One thing that I did hear was, we wanna make sure that we hear that there is a plan in place. We will board a hundred percent for our, our teachers and our students. Should the law not pass, that we have a plan in place so that we have still quality programming in our district. So, board, that is our challenge, with to make sure that we have a quality plan and continue to work on that. A, personnel. Consider resolution to adopt the following resignation for the purpose of retirement. B, employment of personnel for migrant program, as on the addenda. Two, consider resolution to approve employment contracts for the following personnel. Employment contracts for the two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year. Due to schoolwork conflict, the following individual has requested his contract be rescinded. A, Michael Travis. B, athletic supplemental contract for two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year, Amy Peterson. Three, consider resolution to approve the migrant education program to be held at Woodmore High School, June seventeenth through June twentieth, two thousand fifteen, as well as the following salary schedule and employment of personnel for summer two thousand fifteen-sixteen B, employment of personnel for the migrant education program, as follows. Four, on the addenda, consider resolution to approve employment contract for those of certified and classified personnel for the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year.
Is that it?
I'll say.
Second.
I'll say.
Um, again, we have a communication breakdown here, um, on the names that were removed on your addendum. And we need to proceed somewhere. What would you like us to do with this, darling?
I've shared my concerns with you in a letter, and I believe that you would proceed as possible, above the ninety-eight ball, because the director was highly late and so forth. I've shared your concerns, you can read them today. We have to get these.
Some of that came out of finance meeting, uh, we'll get it taken care of as quickly as we can. We'll probably have that, uh, special board meeting at some point, time to approve, uh, the list on the back here. On the back of the addendum.
It's at the very top.
Okay, any other questions?
I've got a question. We're approving Elaine Brinkman's retirement twice.
We should.
It should be.
It should've been taken off by Reddit, just because she was there.
Yeah, remove, you can remove that, we already did it once. Can't retire twice. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Lizaq?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
I'm sorry.
B, consider resolution to approve a change in location for the Woodmore after-prom activities that have been approved at the March seventeenth, two thousand fifteen board meeting. Change location from Fremont Y MCA to Woodmore High School. The prom is scheduled for Saturday, May second, and the after-prom will begin Saturday at ten-thirty and end at six-thirty AM. Uh, that's incorrect. It'll begin at eleven-thirty PM and end at three AM Sunday. The committee will also require time for setting up before, and cleaning up after the event. So, that is a correction on the time. C, consider resolution to approve the following handbook, kindergarten parent handbook for two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year. D, consider resolution to approve an empirical for transportation to Tridale Central Catholic High School for two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year for a student due to distance requirement, the transportation number of pupils to be transported, and cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment and maintenance. E, it goes along with the D, consider resolution to approve a request for reimbursement in lieu of transportation for two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year at a rate to be determined by the Ohio Department of Education for the following, down to Sandridge, students at New Sandridge. F, consider resolution to approve a change in location for the two thousand fifteen Woodmore after-prom. The original press was approved at the March seventeenth board meeting. G, consider a resolution to approve the following fundraiser for the two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year, Woodmore impression class salves no codes, April twenty-sixth through May second, two thousand fifteen.
Motion, please.
I move.
Second.
Second.
Questions?
I, I just have one, what happened that we moved the after-prom?
Jamie. When did you want this?
Uh, as Mr. Keever had mentioned, there was some question as to having an after-prom. Uh, the group got together to try to plan the after-prom. Last year, many students had thought it was pretty cool that another school had gone to Calahari for the after-prom, so we looked into the YMCA, they have a pool, they have activities, things going on, but it was going to cost nine-hundred dollars to go to the YMCA, so we had the students poll, poll all the seniors and juniors to say, hey, would you use the pool area if we were to go to the YMCA? Most of them said no, because a lot of the girls hair, uh, things like that. So, it was decided by the committee that we would hold it back at the school again since we would be able to have the exact same activities and not spend that hundred dollars.
Thank you, I'm sure. Any other questions?
Um, can I just clarify for the community, it's my understanding, since we're, um, approving the kindergarten parent handbook, that there is not going to be half a kindergarten offer starting next year. Just wanna make sure that the community knows that.
Correct, that is correct, that we will have full day kindergarten for all students next year.
Any other questions?
Are B and F different?
Well, they sounded the same when I read it. Again, as we said, the location was changed from the YMCA. The only change was the time. Since we're back on our grounds, we're not gonna stay the entire night. The students will be able to arrive at eleven-thirty and they will leave at three o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Lizaq?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
Other, A. Consideration of a request from the Harris Elmore Library to approve the following resolution, resolution for renewal of an existing tax levy attachment. A resolution requesting the Board of Education, Woodmore Local School District, Allen County, Ohio, to submit to the electors of the library district of the Harris Elmore Public Library, the question of a renewal of an existing tax for current expenses of the Harris Elmore
Mr. Cummings, thank you. Second.
Y'all second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Lizaq?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
Consider resolution to approve the second reading for the following policy, policy
CHCH, approval of the handbooks and directives revised from first reading.
Second. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Lizaq?
Yes.
Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
Yes.
Um, we have a request for executive session, um, I'm not sure how we.
Let's see, item number one.
Item number one. Um, so, motion, please.
I'll move.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Bench?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Lizak?
Yes.
Mr. Huss?
Yes.
There will be no minister, business conductor at that executive session, I will thank everybody for coming to see me, all the good comments, especially from the kids, thank you very much.